6:81030 AM public hearing, consideration of draft ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the Lake County Code relating to permitting agriculture exempt and temporary cannabis processing structures, and amending Chapter 27 of Lake County Code regarding mitigation fees, and amending Article 68 of the zoning code regarding definitions of temporary building types, Director Turner.
Thank you, Director Turner, Community Development Director. I also have with me our code enforcement manager, Andrew Amelung. No, I don't. Our cannabis program manager, Andrew Amelung. Sorry. And also, I wanted to thank a couple members of our Cannabis Ordinance Task Force for joining us today. We have Rebecca Harper, who sits in the Farm Bureau Chair, and Jennifer Smith, who represents LCCA?
Correct.
Yes, Lake County Cannabis Alliance. Alliance, Association of Cannabis Alliance. The ordinance that the Board gave us to take through review process has been well-vetted at numerous meetings from the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, as well as the Agricultural Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission. And to go over it in detail, as well as address any environmental analysis or results, I will turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you. This is Andrew Amelung, the Cannabis Program Manager. As you know, this ordinance would primarily allow a path for our approved cultivators to pursue temporary processing structures. An additional aspect of it was covered for ag-exempt structures, however, I'm going to let my director speak to that as I wrap up towards the end. But the primary focus here is processing structures, temporary processing structures. The regulations included cover application requirements, setback requirements, allowable footprint size, slope requirements, electrical limitations, and inspection requirements, guidelines for the use of generators, as well as limitations on the duration of use. As you know, a little background, the resolution that started this process was approved on September 27, 2022 by the Board, and then sent to the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force for review and recommendations. They reviewed it between October and January. The recommendations were then taken to the Agricultural Advisory Committee on February 27, 2023, and then to the Planning Commission on April 18, 2023. And then, as you probably remember, between April and May, it came to the Board and was discussed extensively and continued as well a handful of times. And then ultimately, some of the aspects of the original ordinance were decoupled, whereas some parts of it could be categorically exempt, those parts moved forward. The other parts were determined that they need to undergo a CEQA review, which we completed over the summer, and now we are returning with our findings. So the project setting was essentially triggered from an increase in demand in these temporary structures from our approved projects. For the most part, many of these approved projects included a permanent processing facility or structure. However, due to market conditions and in the cannabis industry falling in 2021, combined with increased construction costs, have been very prohibitive for our approved cultivators to basically implement their permanent processing structure, which is why they're pursuing these temporary structures, to serve as a bridge until they can get to the point to construct their permanent structure. Furthermore, just countywide, we are looking at 141 approved use permits. Of those 141 approved permits, 107 are for outdoor cultivation, while 25 are for mixed light or indoor, and the rest are for manufacturing, processing, and retail sales. As part of the analysis, staff looked at general plan conformity, which included Chapter 3 on growth and development. Policies taken from Chapter 3 and applied for consistency with the general plan include permitting procedure regulations, agricultural buffers, and diverse economic base. Chapter 7 was also covered for health and safety, and policies reviewed for consistency with the general plan include development constraints, inter-agency coordination, development requirements, contamination prevention, and inspection of hazardous material handlers and waste generators. And finally, Chapter 8 was also covered for noise. Policies reviewed for consistency include noise compatibility guidelines and sensitive The zoning ordinance conformity and general requirements were also covered, and given the fact that this is really only applicable to approved projects that have already met the standards of Chapter 21, the zoning ordinance, it was found that the proposed ordinance was consistent with our zoning ordinance conformity. In terms of environmental analysis, an initial study was conducted, and a negative declaration was determined to be the case due to the existing regulations and the applicability only on approved projects that have already undergone a CEQA evaluation. There are a handful of comments and concerns, which I'll briefly get through, then we can open it up for a broader conversation. There's still aspects of this that probably people still have questions about, and I imagine the discussion could help clarify some of the issues. Let's see here. The first concern would be the temporary nature. We did receive your comment, your email. There is language that covered three years for these temporary structures, but then there was also language in some of the recommendations that followed 60 days. I believe that stemmed with the initial idea to open up a temporary processing facility for 60 days during the harvest season, so once per year, especially for our outdoor cultivators, and they could do that for up to three years. However, through further recommendations, I believe Director Turner can clarify this, is that the recommendations also included being able to use, especially in the terms of the containers, to be able to keep them onsite and use them for storage when not in use for processing. Which, again, as you guys know, but just for everyone listening, to clarify, the two primary temporary structures proposed through this would be containers for processing, as well as general-purpose tents for processing. Another clarification, in the draft ordinance, there was language that talked about a 50-foot setback. However, all of our cannabis cultivation sites are required to have 100-foot setback from the property line, so they would be upheld to that 100-foot, or most likely, they have already met that 100-foot setback. In addition to that, there's also a 200-foot setback from residences, which these approved projects would have met. Further comments, oh, there was some comments from the public, some confusion on processing versus drying in those terms. The task force did make the recommendation to go with a drying structure ordinance. As the ordinance moved through various rounds of recommendation and review, it was ultimately decided to go with the word "processing" based on the DCC description for cultivation processing, which includes trimming, curing, drying, grading of the cannabis, packaging or labeling cannabis. So we can expect that a variety of those activities would be involved. So if we just use the word "drying," then that could technically limit somebody from bucking and trimming, so. Furthermore, let's see here. Okay, ag-exempt structures, I do have some comments on those, but I'll hold off on those until Director Turner can address the fact that it was stricken from the previous ordinance. There is some language in the current clean version of it that was attached at the end of it, at the end of that ordinance, but yeah, I'm just going to hold off on that topic for a moment. There's a couple more to get to. Oh, there was some confusion about the terms for mechanical equipment, especially in the initial study, which often referenced air filtration. However, we can expect that mechanical equipment and systems are primarily there for climate control. So we should ensure that that language encompasses fans for drying, dehumidifiers, and associated electrical and mechanical equipment. Technically, a fan under building codes is a mechanical equipment, so. Let's see, a couple more items. Oh, allowable use, there was a few, well, one question from the public, you know, where are these going to be? How is this applied? Are we opening up new spaces for these structures? The answer is no. They would not be allowed outside of an already-approved cultivation area. Should they wish to pursue one outside of that, that would be an amendment of a use permit, which would require a new CEQA evaluation for that footprint outside of what's already been approved. Furthermore, for pending projects who wish to incorporate this, well, they still have the opportunity to incorporate into their plans as part of their use permit, so. Let's see, oh, one other note, I did notice there was some language at the end of the ordinance that still referenced categorical exemption. However, under CEQA Section 15378, the approval of this ordinance was determined to be, by definition, a project in which case it could have potential environmental impacts. So we did move forward with the initial study, so I just wanted to clarify that. In terms of ag-exempt structures, do you want to take that one over?
Thank you. Both the Board of Supervisors and the State of California consider cannabis to be an agricultural product. Because of that, when I first returned to Lake County as deputy director and was processing or signing on ag-exempt permits, it did not occur to me that actually we wouldn't already have considered cannabis to be appropriate for an ag-exempt structure. So there have been a few that I've just compared to the criteria that are required for an ag-exempt structure, the minimum parcel size, the ongoing commercial agricultural use, and so I signed off on them, hoping that wasn't a big huge blunder. Since then, I have not done it since we've been working on this ordinance. However, I would want to point out that it was the unified recommendation of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, the Ag Advisory Committee, and the Planning Commission that we retain the ag-exempt guidelines and requirements as they currently stand, and just allow cannabis, commercial cannabis permatees to be able to apply for an ag-exempt structure, just like any other farmer. So that is why it was stricken from the, in your redline, it was just removed, because the redline version reflects sort of the track changes version of the different recommendations, whereas the clean version integrates the recommendations from those three bodies. The draft ordinance does include a few typographical errors and areas that were expressive concern on county council when they were doing their review for this hearing. And so I would also defer to county council regarding a few of the tweaks that need to be corrected to see if they actually count as substantive changes. If not, then the recommendation of this department is the approval of the CEQA analysis, our initial study by the Board, as well as approving a first reading of this ordinance. Thank you.
One further comment concerning your question about line 16, page 4, where it states shipping containers, it should state general-purpose tents.
Okay, thank you.
You're talking about letter H?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, did you have anything to add, Lloyd?
Yes, so upon review of the ordinance that was attached to the agenda item packet for this, there appears to be some substantive changes coming out of our offices' review of this, and in addition to some of the more minor typographical corrections. So, you know, and some of the points of clarifications may necessitate some follow-up discussions between the two offices, our office and Community Development Department. So one option for your board, since it is in the first reading of the ordinance, is to continue this, the first reading of this to a specific date and time, give staff enough time to have clarifying discussions, and so on the continuance date, there would be a version of this that would incorporate all of the changes, as well as CDD staff's references, the comments made by CDD staff in presentation for this item. So that is one option for your board.
Supervisor Spatier.
A couple of questions. There's some differences in how I see shipping containers being done versus the general-purpose tent. I know that I do see a maximum of three years on the shipping containers, but I don't see a maximum of three years for the general-purpose tent.
Two years.
Is, I, no more than two times, but is that too, like, it doesn't say 60 days out of the calendar year, so if you do some in October or November, you can't, you can do them again in January or February if you still need them, and then you're done. I'm just kind of, it's different language that's used, rather than kind of a conforming language for both. And why two times rather than three times, when one of them's three years and one of them's two years? Just kind of curious, is the difference there?
Yep, I think that was a question in my email as well.
The discussion, and if the Cannabis Task Force members would like to chime in on this one, it's my remembrance that the discussion for keeping the shipping containers for an extended period of times was actually limited only to shipping containers and being able to use them for storage outside of that three-year time. We had no such discussion regarding maintaining a temporary drying tent or a temporary tent over a three-year period. So that's why the change was made only to that one. But I welcome any input from task force members.
I haven't used one of these before, so, first time. Okay, yeah, so I would just agree with Maria. I think that the reason there's a discrepancy, if you will, between that is just because of the more permanent nature of a shipping container as opposed to a tent. You know, there may be instances where shipping containers could be used for other purposes, whereas tents typically are of a more temporary nature. So I think that's really the only reason for that difference.
Just going through here, so just want to be clear that shipping containers, and I know there was a question that we received about power generators, obviously, nothing prohibits anybody from using other alternative powers. This is just making a statement like solar or anything else like that. This is solely saying that generators are available or allowed as long as you meet these criterias. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes. Additionally, there was conversation at the Cannabis Task Force level that did not make it into this ordinance, and the request was that generators be dealt with instead of sort of piecemealing and for separate uses, if the generators themselves, the regulations surrounding them, become more universal for all different uses. But since that didn't directly belong in this ordinance, it was set aside as a side recommendation.
Okay. And then the reason I brought up the power issue is we are changing the ag-exempt description in our fire mitigation fees and saying that if there's power attached, that fire mitigation fees will be due. I just want to make sure I'm reading that correctly.
The use of electrical in an ag-exempt structure does require a building permit for the electrical. That is where the fire districts would be notified of that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure and clarify on that. Then there was a statement by Mr. Amelung that it's processing, not drying, but yet the title is dry shed. Do we need to say processing shed? Does that matter? Just kind of curious, since it seems very specific about the activity in the title.
Should say processing.
Speak to that, yes, I would prefer to use the term processing.
Okay. I just wasn't sure if it was changed already, or if you were asking us to make that amendment on what was already provided to us.
Yes, I understand. Yeah, we can make that change to the language within the ordinance, whereas the initial study and the staff report provide it refer to processing structures, so.
Okay, and then I have two last questions. One of the things that I know was submitted originally to the group to review, and I'm not going to argue it right now, but I just want to make sure that it's put out there. We are approving farms that are between 10 and 5 acres right now, for up to like 10,000 square feet, or whatever it is that the maximum square footage is for cannabis farms. And I know that the ag-exempt, I believe, starts at 10 acres, and so we may have farms that do not have access to that. Have we heard from those farms about the unavailability of accessing an ag-exempt structure, such as a container or a general-purpose tent?
Well, I think you, one thing to keep in mind is that the recommendation would be 10% of the canopy area would be the limitation for the processing structures, whether tents or containers or ag-exempt structures combined, a variety of those. Keep in mind that for outdoor cultivation, there's a 20-to-1 ratio. For one acre of cannabis canopy, you need 20 acres within your parcel. So let's say a five-acre activity of canopy would essentially have 20 times that acreage. So the parcels are most likely going to meet that requirement. However, there is a recommendation to bring it down to five-acre minimums, especially when you get into the specialty cottage use permits, as well as some of the mixed-light use permits, which tend to be smaller operations.
Yeah, and I'm thinking just your general farm as well. We'd like to motivate people to get involved in our ag industry, and sometimes it doesn't start off with 20 acres or 100 acres, and if you start off with five, still having access to that ag-exempt. So just something in the future to think about. If we didn't change at all the definition of ag-exempt, and it's still the same, then it's still, you have to meet the 10 acres in order to be, to access an ag-exempt building. And I think anybody who's farming, no matter if they have five acres or less than 10 acres, should have access to that in order to have equity in how they can run their business and be successful.
Am I understanding that that recommendation was considered, but I don't think it's part of this ordinance? It's going to, we're going to be bringing that back to you at a later date, I believe.
Okay, I just wanted to make the statement. And then the last one, just to understand you correctly, this is a negative declaration. The CEQA exemption language is still there as far as the ordinance itself?
Yes, that's what, that was my last comment when I was giving the overview that...
Like Section 5, the proposed ordinance is exempt under CEQA guidelines. At that point, that language needs to be changed to say the specifics of the findings of the initial study?
Correct.
Okay.
It was not. It didn't undergo an initial study.
Okay.
Andrew did a great job with his staff report and with the CEQA evaluation. Modifying the ordinance was my job, sorry.
Oh, I do have one last thing. When we create new laws, there's times of a period of non-enforceability. I know that this may come back to us for another first reading because of the amount of adjustments we're making, but I also know that we're getting into the time period where people are going to want to dry and start drying. And I know that there could be a time for education and a time to try to get people in the fold, but not go after people and start fining people for not meeting exactly the recommendations that are here, and then maybe looking at next year as starting the enforceability, just offering that as a potential avenue in the midst of where we are season, in the season at this moment in time.
Thank you. That is consistent with how we have been handling this year's compliance monitoring. If we see things that could be covered in this ordinance, we're waiting on enforcement on that. But I do appreciate if that is supported by the Board, that helps us out a lot.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Green.
Thank you, appreciate the hard work by staff and also the task force. Thank you for joining us. It's cool, we didn't do that back in the day. It's good to see you here. I heard you say that it, all these temporary structures would be within the footprint of an approved cultivation area, subject to a use permit. But this language doesn't expressly say that, and one reason there may be confusion is it does call out some setbacks, but not all of the setbacks in our original commercial ordinance. So if we're going to put the requirement that it has to be within an approved cultivation area, then that should probably be made an express requirement, if only because it is going to support the neg deck on the initial study, that any of the temporary structures described in this ordinance will be within a previously-approved cultivation area that was subject to CEQA review, and that the temporary use will not negate the findings made on that approved use. But as currently drafted, I'm seeing not necessarily a typo, but maybe an oversight. We took pains in the hoop house ordinance to make clear that it only applied to commercial cannabis applicants and not to agriculture generally. On page 2 of the draft ordinance, under 1B, it says, "In addition to those conducting agricultural operations applicants with approved cannabis cultivation permits can apply for the temporary ag structure permit." So is that an oversight that should be remedied to make clear that just like the hoop house ordinance, this ordinance pertaining to tents and generators is only going to apply to commercial cannabis operators with a valid use permit? That's one question, I'll let you chew on that, and two more.
Can we just, just get to this question?
We proceed with this ordinance in regard specific to cannabis processing.
And I think that's correct, and in that case, I would suggest that introductory clause in that paragraph be stricken. The other ordinance did also impose a requirement for surety bonds. I don't see that requirement here, so if this is getting morphed into the larger ordinance, and that will also apply to this, maybe it's just, I need some reference there in the staff report to make sure that surety bonds would be required, certainly in the case of shipping containers. And my last thing, I do agree with the comment, we should probably take a look at generators generally. I would like to see an express requirement, even if it's only parroting the idea that there has to be a 200-foot minimum setback from any off-site residence, we may need to repeat that idea. And if I were to go above and beyond where we are currently with the commercial ordinance, I'd suggest a requirement of a sound muffling enclosure around any generator that's used for continuous purposes. But that's this, surety bond, making sure this applies only to commercial cannabis, and maybe some clarification on setbacks, and maybe the addition of sound muffling enclosures.
Surety bonds, we talked about because of so much plastic being left, and I don't know that it's necessary for the containers that will be converted into storage and a tent that will be taken down.
I'm going to strongly push for that. Those containers, they multiply like gerbils, and they are messy, and they are rusty, and even if it is common practice in the industry, it's not a common practice we want to encourage, and we certainly want to have the ability to remove those if they're not in compliance. Surety bond is where we do that.
But there...
Can I add some clarification?
There are standards for containers if they're not being used, so again, I think there's other vehicles to deal with that.
Can I just add some brief clarification, at least my understanding of why there's not necessarily a statement or a clause distinguishing whether these requirements apply to traditional operations or cannabis operations? It's just my understanding that because this is a cannabis ordinance specifically, there's not necessarily a need for a statement of that nature. I think it's kind of, I mean, should be somewhat obvious.
Okay, do we have any other comments from the Board? Supervisor Spatier.
I'll just add that I would prefer not having redundancy within this document versus what's in our general commercial cultivation ordinance, because if we change one and we forget to change the other, obviously, you have to have the permission to do commercial cultivation in order to meet this, and we're not going to forget the other standard. So I don't think there's a need to duplicate language that is already in one ordinance. I think staff is used to dealing with different layers of different ordinances in order to accomplish the goal of any project that's brought to them. So I'm not in favor of adding the distance or changing any setbacks in order to share again what's written in a different document that you're obviously going to abide to and apply to this stuff.
Yes, that was in large part what supported the negative declaration, and the fact where other environmental impacts were covered. Article 27, Section 13AT for commercial cannabis activities has language that covers basically all the regulations. They already exist, so there wasn't much of a need to add them into this ordinance, so.
And similarly, we have language on decibel levels for things of generators already, whether that's in air district or that's in your pockets, I don't know, but those already exist, so I don't think there's a need for another redundancy of rules and regulations that exist elsewhere.
That is correct, and there, you know, there are various activities that allow for various decibels according to our county code. However, this would just be the standard decibel requirements. I believe it's 55 decibels during daytime hours, the specific hours, I'm not sure at the moment, but then 45 decibels at the property line during evening hours. So it would be limited to that if that would require some type of... If that would require some type of noise insulation around the generator, then that would be the case for that project.
Thank you. All right, I will open it up for public input. If anyone would like to come up, state your name and have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Pieskow and Board. I'm Sarah Bodnar, Policy Director for LCCA. I wanted to say thank you to this board for the creation of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force, which really originated around this, this body of work, which was creating a workable temporary drying structures ordinance for the industry. And I would share with all of you that of all the community groups that I've participated in since 2016, since Prop 64 has been adopted, I think this is, this has been the most constructive community group of stakeholders that have come together around setting policy. And the, for appointing the community members, this has been an exceptional experience of people really coming to the table to have a discourse that's been absent in the history of policymaking, where we've got fire and ag and neighbors and CDD and the industry sitting around a table together. It has allowed for education, for cannabis operators to explain what it's like to grow and dry and sell cannabis in today's market. So I think the, the policy you have in front of you is born of that, and it's a testament to this county's commitment to getting it done. I don't have to belabor how long it has taken us to get here. And I'm slightly discouraged to hear that at this late stage, County Council has some issues with the language, and I wish that that had already been reviewed before it got here. But nonetheless, let's do it right. I, I think this is a giant step forward in terms of setting holistic policy, where we've got the pieces now clicking together instead of having, you know, a piecemeal approach to policy setting. Hopefully, once we have done this right, this is gonna provide a much clearer roadmap for operators, not just, you know, for next season, but for many seasons to come. And that as we continue with the rest of the cannabis task force's work, all of the pieces are gonna start to click together like this. So I think this is a turning point. And I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, the staff for participating in this process, the community members who as volunteers have come to meetings every two weeks for, I think a year now, and, and for the board for making space for that community dialogue, because I think the result is something that has allowed a lot of community members to raise concerns, have them heard, have them addressed, and then move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else?
Michael Wagner, thank you everybody for seeing this stuff come forward. It's been a long road to get here. With that, I think we should move forward in the proper manner so that all the hard work that got us to this point, that we don't miss an I or miss a T, as it were. So with that, I wanted to point out a couple of things that I think might be something just to take a note of, since it does seem like there are some consistencies that we don't make sure do or wind up in that policy that you guys are working on. So one of the things that I noticed is exits are no more than 20 feet from any point in the structure. I'm not sure why or how that got in there as a specific amount, but I just don't know what 20 feet would, would have to do with the use of the structure. I do understand there needing to be an equivalency or some kind of measurement that's used for safety standards. I don't know that 20 feet is, is the correct amount, but I think it's something we should take note of, because these rules that you guys are making turn into functional, real things that people are building. So thinking of how that gets applied or is looked at ultimately turns into dollars that people are gonna spend. So it's just a point. It also, you know, we've talked a little bit about shipping containers, but the other half of this is drying tents in general, and specifically the requirement for it to have a dirt floor. When it comes to testing for microbial, for everybody going to market, if you have fans and dirt floors, you are bound to ruin your microbial scanning or screening for laboratory processes. So I think that intrinsically that is a problem, having a dirt floor and fans blowing, you're gonna have dirt and microbes that wind up on the cannabis, and ultimately they won't pass their state required laboratory processes. The generators, which I really appreciate that that's been noted, because that is a nice alternative or something that people can use. It says tier four is highly recommended, I might think that I should say is required, just for point of reason. The language around heavy, heavy fire resistant canvas material is kind of an open-ended bit of language that I'd like to see either a specific to the type of material that it has to be, just so that people don't waste their money or their time in going and putting up something that ultimately the county doesn't see as fitting that, that requirement, because the requirement is kind of open. Thank you.
Your time's up. Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the chambers? Do we have anyone in the Zoom room? We've got some hands up. We'll start with Nara. You can unmute and have three minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Supervisors. I, I serve as your appointee for the cannabis industry seat on the task force, though I'm not speaking on behalf of that body today. I do want to thank you for, for putting this, this task force together. It is, it's really starting to produce some, some great work with, with all the important stakeholders at the table from the very beginning. And so I think what we're, what we're sending forward is vetted and as, and still goes through two policy, other, other policy committees before it comes to you. Just wanted to address quickly some of Supervisor Green's concerns. The, I would say the, the need to specify cannabis and/or a need for violations, I think that can be handled in the development standards portion of the, of the ordinance, which is being reworked at, at some time, hopefully in the very near future. There's conditions of approval, there's development standards, and there's also a section on violations and enforcement. And that's where probably surety bond language could apply to entire segments of the cannabis ordinance of that, of that chapter. And that anything within that chapter would be applied to cannabis, because that's the title of the, of the code. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about anybody, anybody wanting to be enforced like cannabis is and, and choosing to follow cannabis code. But again, thanks for your thought. Wish we had been able to get something together for this season, but appreciate that we're, you know, we have something moving forward that's gonna last for a while. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Nara. And next we have Damian Ramirez.
Hello. Thank you for your time, Board of Supervisors. This is Damian Ramirez here. Looks like there's been a lot of progress done, and I appreciate all the hard work from everyone involved. Task force has been, has been a wonderful step in the right direction. Couple things that just come out to me, I am a little concerned with the language when it comes to the mechanical installations being prohibited except for odor control systems. There's a couple essential items for an effective drying structure. You would need dehumidifiers, you would need fans, you potentially need heaters or air conditioning. So if we're doing this to help the industry process their product properly, we probably need to allow them to have the proper tools to do that. I'm sure that shouldn't be too difficult, since these are gonna be under inspections and standard permits for electrical installation. So just wanted to make note of that. Just a brief response to Mr. Wagner's comment on tier 4F required, that doesn't seem to make too much sense. You need to comply with the applicable air toxic control measures. So what, what those are, what the requirements are, it kind of speaks for itself there. If the county wants to recommend something, I guess that they're well in their ability to do that. And the generators is just, I just want to thank you for including them in here. You know, when the cannabis exclusionary map was drawn up, it's put a lot of farms in very remote locations without a traditional, you know, access to traditional electricity. So I appreciate that in there. That is imperative for a lot of operators within the county. And other than that, I just want to once again, thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you, Damian. Okay, if we have no further public comment, I will bring it back to the board. It sounds like we need to continue this. Need a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor, respond to you.
I just wanted to respond to some of the comments. I know that I worked on the original resolution ordinance that was sent to the group. Appreciate the work that's been done to bring it back to us in this shape and form. But I know that the 20 feet came from our building inspector. I don't know if that's a specific standard, but I, I wouldn't know any better than to just have faith in our building inspector to know what the fire code is and that 20 feet is the accurate amount. And the tier 4F comes directly from a quoted portion of an email from our air quality district chief officer, Gerhart, who provided that for us to put inside the ordinance itself. So I think it makes perfect sense. I did want to bring up one thing. We did receive an email with a comment about the, sorry, it seems picky, but at the same time, it does make sense, the color of the general purpose tents. Is it possible to make a request for something that's a little bit more on the natural side of colors than something that would stand out and, I don't know. There was obviously an issue within a community where the tents were a little bit more obvious than they would have liked it to be. And so just curious if that's something that we can place in there, or if there's already other regulations that can be utilized for that.
We do not have other regulations. That would come under more like design guidelines, which we don't do for this sort of thing. But should it be the will of the board, that would be one of the amendments we would work on before we bring it back to you at the next hearing.
I, I'm not in favor of that.
And furthermore, these projects are approved and they've undergone aesthetic review under a previous initial study. So the changes and impact from the permanent structure to the temporary structure most likely will not be significant. Furthermore, also just a note on generators at the state level, according to DCC, larger industrial and commercial type generators of 50 horsepower or more are allowed as a regular use. However, smaller consumer type generators, less than 50 horsepowers, are only allowed as emergency use only or potentially limited use, which is less than 80 hours or less. So on the state level, they're gonna be required to have more of the industrial level generators that are more efficient and less impactful.
Thank you.
So I have one last question. For applicants who applied a long time ago and didn't have dry sheds, whether temporary or not, within their site plan with it, is that gonna, can you come back and let us know when you come back next time, next week hopefully, to let us know what that process is? Do they need to update their application? Is it just a layer on top where it's not a full update of their original application? Just so people are aware of what that process might actually entail versus those that have already added a dry shed within their application that was approved by the planning commission? I just think it's, it'd be nice for everybody to know their pathway and avenues that they need to follow.
I feel like I have an answer for that, but I'll hold off and yes, we will look at it.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. The Cannabis Ordinance Task Force welcomes all public comments. So, and I think, you know, if you sit in on the meetings, you'll see that our group really tries to consider all public comments and, and even kind of prolongs our discussion based around, around what the public input is. So to me, it can be upsetting sometimes, especially when we come to the Board of Supervisors. The comments we hear are usually from people who do not participate in that opportunity. So I would just encourage any members of the public who, who don't already tune into our meetings to do so and to provide your comments, especially those that were provided today and, and comments of similar nature to that group at that time. That would be really helpful to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, with regard to that statement, I've been given a lot of feedback from some folks that have basically given public input that they're not afforded that opportunity. I know that at times they say that there's very difficulty to have more than three minutes or even with the Zoom link and whatnot. That's just the feedback I'm getting, so I just want to make sure, I'm not sure if we're having more meetings with the group, but if so, let's try and do a better job with that, if that's the case. You know, if not, explain why, or, you know, I'm just giving you the feedback that I get.
Yeah, of course. And I would say, just out of the policy groups and advisory groups that I've sat on, I think that this task force specifically has been one that's maybe the most accommodating to public input, in my opinion. We haven't enforced any real structure or limitations on input that can be provided. So I think, in my opinion, there's been lots of opportunity for public comment. I know sometimes as a member of the public, it can, it can be hard to get, get the information that you'd like across and, and feel heard. But I do feel that the group has been taking public comments seriously, and, and so I would just encourage those members of the public to also reach out to their representative on the task force, whether they're members of the agriculture community, members of the cannabis industry, or North or South Lake residents, to utilize their representatives as well.
I think, I think the, the group that we're speaking of probably doesn't feel as if they have a representative, if that makes any sense. And just not saying this is happening here, but coming from different committees that we're on with ad hoc working groups, sometimes we're put in that position to, to not be heard, or some of the information is slated towards, you know, biased studies or anything like that. Not saying it's happening, I'm just saying I, we've witnessed that type of behavior in different committees that we're on outside of the county. So just want to make sure that giving that extra step sometimes is good. And so if you're doing that, I appreciate it, because that eliminates that type of speculation, if you will. So I just wanted to share that, yeah.
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And maybe if, if you or another supervisor wants to sit in on one of our meetings and, you know, even if it's just a conversation with me afterward, where you provide some feedback on ways that you think we could improve our process, that's also welcome, at least from my perspective.
I've refrained from going, because I don't want to, you know, it's, it's ad hoc work group, and I don't want to do that, you know, it's not, not right.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you. Just, I know we're gonna continue this to go over the language, so I just want to point out that going back again to the ordinance we passed for temporary hoop structures, which is called out on our May 16th agenda, both the clean version of that ordinance and the redlined version of that ordinance. So if we're to be consistent with the board's prior approach with that ordinance, the clause I mentioned, again on page two of today's draft ordinance, starting with the sentence, "In addition to those conducting ag operations," that clause was stricken in the hoop house ordinance on May 16th, and I think would be appropriate to continue that when we take a look at cleaning this up and bringing it back. So just wanted to point that out. And I believe where that language came from was the original resolution in 2022 that had some draft ordinance language. So we strict that particular clause in the hoop house ordinance, and I think it would be appropriate to be consistent with that approach with this.
My personal opinion is if by chance somebody not doing cannabis cultivation would like a temporary building for a moment, this allows them to do so. So I don't know why we'd have to take it out. It's not like we're forcing people to use something. This is helping an industry and also a random potential if somebody has a need or a use for it on a temporary basis going through a normal process. I don't think this restricts the ag industry. If we leave those words behind and it just leaves a potential opportunity, if there's a fire, if there's another natural event that puts them in a position where they need something temporarily, this is right here.
And we had that discussion in May, and as was stated then, and we can repeat today, ag industry very clearly did not want the hoop house ordinance to be applicable in any way to traditional agriculture. to be applicable in any way to traditional agricultural operations. We respected that input in May, and I happen to agree. You know, if somebody else in a non-cannabis thing thinks they can do this, there's nothing in the county code actually that prohibits them from using tents or shipping containers right now. The original ordinance passed in May took the then-recommendations of the ag industry, that they didn't want any part of it. And unless that input has changed on this, then they probably don't want any part of this ordinance either.
I'm just going to ask, is there consensus on Supervisor Green's request?
Oh, no. I thought you meant to move till next week.
So not, there is no consensus on that request?
If I may?
Yes.
One of the reasons for the difference is the hoop houses felt like a restriction to the ag industry for things they already use. Here, this is not something that exists. It's new. And so this would not create a restriction without going through their process. So this is why I think it's perfectly fine to move forward as is.
When is this time certain?
11 o'clock on the 26th.
Who'd like to make the motion? Vice Chair Simon?
I'd like to move this item to September 26th at 11:00 a.m. For a time certain.
And just for added clarification, that would be the first reading of this ordinance.
I'd like to move the first reading of this ordinance to September 26th at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.